Okay, we'll start our meeting back up and since we didn't have a chance before, could we start with the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you for joining us. I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Thank you so much for joining us here today. The Board has been working since 4:30 this afternoon and we continue on. So, our first item today is exciting. We have a recognition for one of our students, Richard.
Thank you, Tina. I'm gonna say a little bit in Spanish if you don't mind. Esta noche vamos a tomar un momento para reconocer a uno de los estudiantes excepcionales, Omar Castroita, de la escuela preparatoria de Boulder High School. This evening, we would like to take a moment to recognize one of our exceptional students, student athletes, Omar Castroita of Boulder High School. ¿Y si quieres tu mamá llegar al podium contigo? Está bien? Omar y Sulema. Sulema is Omar's mother. Teammates on Boulder, high school's boy soccer team call Omar Castroita "Golmar" for his amazing ability to put the ball in the back of the net even when under pressure. It is a skill that helped to lead his team to win the state championship this year and also earned Omar the Boulder County Preps Player of the Year. The high school junior had a phenomenal year with 20 goals and nearly as many assists. BokoPreps.com says, quote, "The Boulder junior is strong on the ball, sees the field better than most, and has the innate ability to make the perfect pass at the right time to set up his teammates for beautiful goals." Additionally, Omar's coach calls him a true playmaker. He said, quote, "It is exciting to see such playmakers in the game at such a young age playing high school soccer where they can dynamically open up a game with any touch. He sees things that other players are simply not going to see and things that coaches don't even see, and he does it on the field in real time." Soccer skills also apparently run in Omar's family. As you might recall, his older brother, Brian, was on Boulder High School's 2016 state title winning team and his cousins Javi and Luis were 2012 champs. Congratulations to Omar Castroita and the rest of the Boulder High School team for winning the state title this year and again to Omar for being named the 2017 Boulder County Player of the Year in Soccer. Muchísimas gracias, Omar y Sulema. Muchas gracias.
Thanks so much for coming and letting us recognize you tonight. And, Richard, thank you for doing the recognition.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Well, it's just a pleasure to be here tonight. I wanted you to know that the Denver Area School Superintendent's Council has a meeting monthly and we had our monthly meeting last week and I have to tell you that I left feeling so grateful to work for Boulder Valley. First of all, we did a lot of talking about negotiations, the negotiations processes in all of the districts, and all I could do was look at my colleagues and say, "Well, we're sort of having a love fest." And I say that seriously because we have established such strong relationships in Boulder Valley that even when the issues are difficult, we're respectful, we talk well about them. The fact that you participate in the process is a strength. And I just felt really good talking about the various sets of negotiations across the Denver metro area. We also had a conversation about the National Teacher Walkouts and I was quite relieved. We all looked at each other and said, "You know, we need to talk to the president of our teachers' unions." And it spoke well for our teachers' unions across the Denver metro area that people said, "No, we're not at that point yet," but they also said they were watching the nation carefully and watching the issues around school funding carefully because the teacher walkouts nationally have not been about teachers walking out. They've been about, "We really need to think about how we fund our schools." And so, it was a good conversation and I'm glad there's unity across the Denver area. I have visited Eldorado, Monarch, Netherland Elementary, High School and Middle School, and Fireside this week. And again, I leave the schools with just such a grateful feeling that we serve our children as well as we do. Finally, last weekend, we had the Trash Bash courtesy of Western Disposal. And Western Disposal, I have learned, is a wonderful partner for Boulder Valley schools. They worked through the Impact Foundation and did major fundraising for the Impact Foundation, which will go to support Boulder Valley classrooms and schools. So, the Trash Bash was fun and I have to say thank you to Western Disposal for the money that they raised for our foundation.
So, are any questions for the Superintendent on her Superintendent report? All right. And now, we have another student piece tonight. We have Student Communication. Welcome. We're so happy you're here.
Good evening, President Marquez, Superintendent Stevenson, members of the Boulder Valley Board of Education. My name is Mark Schaefer, Assistant Superintendent of School Leadership. Tonight, we are joined by one of our phenomenal middle school students who serve on my Middle School Student Advisory Committee, and so, he's going to speak with you and share some of the work that he's doing on behalf of the committee.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Hayden Miller and I'm currently in eighth grade at Horizons K-8. I've been attending the middle school student advisory committee meetings throughout this year and it's been a really great experience for me. I'm really grateful to receive the opportunity to participate in these meetings and it's not just because I get to miss a day of school. It has been a really interesting experience for me to get to meet kids from all, different middle school kids from all across the district and I've met a lot of interesting people that I would not have otherwise ended up meeting. I've also become aware of a lot of issues that are affecting the widest middle school community in Boulder Valley school district but that are not necessarily prevalent within my own school. Throughout this year, we have met a couple of times and discussed a number of different topics. Our longstanding goal for the meetings was come up with a number of different issues that affected our district as a whole and then split up into different groups and create presentations about the issues to educate other people about them and try to create, find solutions to those issues. We haven't yet finished the process and we're planning to present our presentations to the middle school principals across the district and a few other people. The project that my group ended up working on was related to punishments and logical consequences. And other projects included issues with the backpack rule, bullying and mental health, and then also vaping and drugs across the middle school community. This is how we spent the majority of our time and we've also spent time being educated about and educating each other about other issues in the community, including drugs and vaping and bullying and stuff along those lines. One other thing that I would like to add is that I felt as though the attendance dropped off, is that the attendance, I felt as if the attendance dropped off after a couple of different, after a couple of meetings and that it would be a good idea to attempt to explore different ways to keep kids more involved in the longer-term process. I would like to emphasize once again that it's been a really great opportunity for me and I really enjoyed attending these meetings. And thank you all for inviting me to speak today. Any questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was terrific. Okay, so, our next item is public participation. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the Board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th graders, grade students. The Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K through 12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium. It starts at green when your two minutes starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the Board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. So, we're starting our speakers with the speakers who came to speak at the 4:30 special meeting, which were rolled over to the beginning of this list. So, I'd like to invite Mandy Williams to speak first. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having me. My name is Mandy Williams. I'm the parent of four children and I've been helping kids go through BVSD for the last 27 years of my life. I have a 32-year-old who went to a family resource school, Martin Park Elementary, which is not named that anymore, but I had the experience of co-locating with another school at that time period and it was a very stressful and difficult time for us as a community. We had a very rich community experience there. We had a lot of diversity, both in income, types of families, different nationalities from all over the world, and then we had to co-locate with High Peaks Elementary under one principal. We ended up with temporary buildings and a whole bunch of other things that were just extremely stressful to our kids and to our community. So, I was glad to hear earlier in the meeting that the Summit School isn't, it sounds like, not intending on going down that road of co-location. I certainly would hope not. It was very stressful. I have two children now who go to New Vista and they have extreme differences. One is autistic. He used a lot of resources to get through middle school every day. And at New Vista, he has been getting As and Bs all of his own accord. He's in smaller classes. He's able to focus on the things he's super interested in and really doing well. We have another child who transferred there with a 4.6 GPA, an overachiever kind of child. She's doing very well there as well and the proximity to CU was a key for her decision. She's able to go across this street to CU. She's taking 3,000 level Spanish classes at the college level as a junior. She's taking calculus. She's taking college-level science classes. She's going to graduate with a whole year's worth of college credits by the time she graduates and she's having a fantastic time.
Okay, thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
That's it. It goes fast. Our next speaker is Jason Sapsen. Is, okay, we think he left. So, Sarah Kleimer?
Hi, everyone. So, I'm a parent of four children who have gone through BVSD and still going through. So, BCSAS parent, Manhattan, Platt Choice, New Vista. And I share that because I've, and I don't even, I'm kind of confused if co-location is even an issue anymore, but that's what I came to speak about because with BCSAS, you brought two very diametrically different programs into one building at the same time. So, even though they, neither school had been in the building before, there were still a lot of issues to be worked out that have been worked out. I will say that. But it took going through principals and a lot of stress on the community. I came into Manhattan, the first year it was Manhattan. We thought our son was going to be going to Baseline, turned out to be Manhattan, and people brought me in because I wasn't in either camp. And so, that experience, that year, was so stressful on the community and the Burbank community in which the Baseline community had come into felt so pushed out. And I know it was bringing two programs, excuse me, into one program. And that's not what we're saying here about New Vista and Summit, but there's something that happens in a community where you're trying to have two such different programs. And that's just the last piece I want to talk about is that I've had three kids go through the New Vista program and thrive. And it's a place where the students feel so comfortable. They get to come into who they are and relax into that and out of that, they thrive. And I feel like if there's another program down the hall or nearby, that sense of being able to relax into your school and know that your program is so there to like surround you with support, it will be a different flavor. It won't be the same. And I don't, I'm not against Summit having a high school. I think it's a great idea, but I just really ask you to, I guess, drop the co-location issue and really let New Vista have its location fully. Thank you.
Thank you. John Diana? Oh, okay. No, we don't think he's here. Okay. Jennifer Sarden?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Sardinia and I think I can keep it to under two minutes because I just want to talk about two points. One is the co-location and the other is the campus swapping. So, I'm a new parent to New Vista. My daughter just transferred in in the middle of the year and she's a ninth grader and she did all this research. She's an excellent student and was, could be in a lot of different schools, but she did her own research into New Vista and felt like that was the perfect fit for her. And her primary reasons were that she has a unique learning style. She loved the acceptive and inclusive community that she saw there. She liked the idea of having personal agency over her education and she loved the small size of that school. And I feel like the co-location piece would really change the tenor of that experience for her. So, I want to support her in being able to keep that small environment that she chose and I'm hoping that that will not be a decision that moves forward. The second thing is that I noticed people didn't speak too much at the 4:30 round was that something unique for us is that when my daughter made this decision, there were some unique challenges to it because we live in Longmont and I work in Loveland at the school district and my husband works in the Longmont School District. So, we're matching school hours to trying to figure out how to get this child who was so invested in her own education to Boulder where, you know, opposed diametrically on the map was a real challenge. But she did the research and came up with the way she could utilize the RTD system to get herself to and from school. And I thought for sure, when she realized she was gonna have to get up at 5:00 in the morning and get to school an hour early and take an hour to get home, it might cool her enthusiasm for this program, but nothing doing. So, here's a teenager and we all know how teenagers like to sleep, at least my teenagers like to sleep in the morning, that gets up every day at 5:00 a.m. to take a bus from another town and take two connections to get herself to the school. And we're able to do that because of the busing system in proximity to CU and how those schedules run for students. And I don't think we would have that if we did a campus swap. So, that's another reason I'd really like you to seriously reconsider that as an option. So, that's all. Ooh, it wasn't quite two minutes, but sorry.
Okay. Mike McKenzie?
Hi, my name is Mike McKenzie. My wife Nancy and I live in Boulder. We have a son at New Vista. Thanks for giving me a voice this evening to complement my earlier emails to each of you. I'd like to employ you not to consider the co-location at all. I think it's brought with a lot of conflict. On a broader picture, I think it's, takes a risk of maybe even attracting a national spotlight. The optics, if what the Daily Camera wrote are true, are very difficult. The idea of, "Would like half of your property and a lot of your money to do this," does not, doesn't show well. Thank you.
Thank you. April Beach? Okay, looks like she might have left. And Christina Lee? Christina, oh, there we are.
I'm here, I'm here. I'm just sitting in the back. Hi, everyone. So, I'm gonna talk about one of the three locations being considered in the Summit application and that is the Lake Shore Estates on Borough Marsh site. That's one of the three locations being considered for Summit's High School. And it is, quote, "inadequate to serve as a school site," end quote. Those are the words of the district's very own staff. So, I'm gonna read from a letter dated April 14th, 2010, written by Glenn Segrew, senior planner of BVSD Planning Office regarding this site. Quote, "BVSD administration has decided to move forward preparations to sell the property as four single-family residential building lots. Under current practices, the site is inadequate to serve as a school site primarily due to the limited street frontage and circuitous neighborhood-level streets," end quote. So, the neighbors and I agree. From 2010 till now, "street frontage remains limited and streets remain circuitous." Also, the Boulder County Land Use Department has placed a building envelope on part of the 9.94 acres. I'm reading for a June 17, 2010 document titled "Conditions of Approval." Quote, "The proposed building envelope keeps future development concentrated on the southeastern portion of the subject parcel," end quote. And I've got a map for you that indicates the building envelope. So, the map that's in Summit's application goes outside this building envelope, so that needs to be looked into. I think the idea of Summit High School is a wonderful idea. I know you're gonna be looking at many other locations. Please don't consider Lake Shore Estates. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, and so, now, speaking on non-agenda items, we'll start with Dorian. And I hope I got the pronunciation right. I'm sorry if I didn't. Okay, great.
Hello, my name is Dorian. I am seven and a half. I am in second grade. A few weeks ago, I got my Chromebook taken away again. My teacher said that I was playing games that I wasn't supposed to do. I felt really sad and frustrated. There were a lot of pop-ups. This happened more than one time. I asked them out of them, but they still popped up. My teacher said that I was trying to get on other websites. I got in trouble more than one time. I got sent to the principal's office one time. I have no other child's Chromebook is taken away. I hope no other children get sent to the principal's office for pop-ups. Thank you for letting me be here and listening to me. Any questions?
Thank you so much. Well done. All right, next we'll have Anna Segor.
Hello. I became concerned about BVSD technology policies when my third-grade son told me about violent games he had played at school. However, the more I learn about BVSD technology policies, the more concerned I am. The Facebook group I created for parents and teachers has over 100 members who have shared their children's experiences with the issues. Students have accessed inappropriate content with racial slurs, profanity, violence, other obscene content, particularly in Spanish, as well as unfiltered news sites. Students have accessed chats with people off-campus through the BVSD network. There are at least two documented cases, two documented incidents of pedophiles contacting BVSD students online at school through the BVSD network. While online in class, students are exposed to targeted advertising despite BVSD claims that the Google Suite for education is ad-free. Ad-blocking software is free and BVSD could easily install it in their computers if they were so inclined. To cap it off, BVSD student browser data is being collected, shared, researched, analyzed, and marketed without parental or student consent. Parents cannot refuse the data sharing and aren't informed about the type of data being shared as the district completes the click-through agreement on their behalf. Requests to Andrew Moore to disable the Chrome sync function to stop data sharing were declined. The way BVSD has deployed technology in class is haphazard and irresponsible as there is only one person assigned to support tens of thousands of devices. There is no proactive system to monitor students' online behavior and communicate risk to parents. The monitoring onus is placed squarely on the backs of students whose brains are not fully developed. The district's digital citizen policy, citizenship policy is non-existent in the classroom. My son has been using computers for five years at Crestview and this is the first year he heard anyone mention the term "digital citizenship." And this training consisted of the librarian saying, "The internet is like shouting into a stadium and anything you don't want the stadium to hear, you should not put on the internet." He has never received any instruction about what type of information is dangerous to share online such as his name, age, address, phone, and I had to do this myself when I realized the way technology was being used in class. Thank you.
Thank you. Meredith Kaufman?
Hi, my name is Meredith Kaufman and I'm going to very briefly speak about start times. So, most Boulder Valley School District schools start between 7:50 and 8:30 in the morning. It's well-known that adolescents don't get enough sleep and one reason is because of early start times for schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends that middle and high schools start at 8:30 or later. This is because during adolescence, our brains become tired later at night and want to sleep later in the morning. When students are forced to wake up for school, they often don't get the necessary eight to 10 hours of sleep that their brains require. Many private schools have shifted their schedules to reflect students' sleep needs. Boulder Valley School District should follow suit and seriously consider the negative implications of starting school too early. Thank you.
Thank you. Tangi Lancaster? And again, I hope I didn't pronounce.
Spot on on that one, too. Good evening. My name is Tangi Lancaster and while I am a BVSD employee, I'm here tonight solely speaking as a parent of two BVSD students. My youngest, Dorian, spoke just a few minutes ago. I am quite concerned as to how teachers and school staff and administration are being trained, or seemingly not, on the Chrome OS and the Chromebook. The lack of understanding and the lack of knowledge by those in authority are hurting children, specifically one of my own. For a child to be repeatedly accused of something that she or he hasn't done at such a young age by multiple authoritative figures can be detrimental to the emotional well-being of the child. When you have a seven-year-old child, a seven-year-old boy child, a seven-year-old boy child with special needs, a seven-year-old black boy child with special needs, being repeatedly reprimanded and sent to the principal's office for having, quote, "poor digital citizenship" because the district can't manage to keep ads from popping up on his Chromebook, the district has a problem. Investing and making sure, at the very least, that the teachers and school staff and administration are aware of what pop-up ads are is needed and necessary before putting the teachers in charge of a classroom full of Chromebooks with minimally technologically trained support staff in the school. Please, train these employees on what my IT husband refers to as "follow-me tabs" and that the Chrome OS is a browser-based OS served by the cloud with cached memory which follows the user from device to device. Please consider this. You may say what's happened with my son is an isolated incident, but when even one child is treated the way mine has been, that is without a question of a doubt, one child too many and changes must be made. I sincerely hope you all heard his plea and that he does not want this to happen to any other child and that you institute some changes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Stephen Lancaster?
Ah, Stephen. That's okay, though. I forgive you. You almost went perfect with the family. It's okay, though. So, hi, my name is Stephen Lancaster. I'm actually a systems integrator at the company Wylen Inc. And you heard from the smarter people in my family and specifically Dorian, who pretty much capped off while I'm here. This is not my thing that I do, but I wanted to touch on concept portions of things that need to be taken effect, no matter what your path is. One thing that you need to understand is the difference between intent and presentation. Chrome OS was presented to you as a cheap, easy way to get Chromebooks and education computer all into your school and be able to provide it to the kids. That's great. But the intent is to connect so that the companies can make money, okay? And once you understand that as a concept, you know that the people behind that are always going to be working hard to try and make more connections, younger, more, on my watch, on my phone, and it's going to follow you wherever you go. That's why it's made. So, if you're going to continue to use Chromebook OSs or any other OSs, you gotta understand that it is an unending job to stay on top of it because it is you as a school versus the world. You should have annual audits. I think that sometimes comfort and comfort and convenience of Chrome OS builds complacency. And so, sometimes we get into this trap where it's like, oh- And so sometimes we get into this trap where it's like, oh, we did all this work, and now we're going to present our path. Phew, we're done. No, you just started, because you just made them new hurdles that they're going to try and attack right away. So you've got to be vigilant in that. If you're not going to do that, then you need to think about doing stuff that's going to be all internally served. Either one is a lot of work. I can just tell you that. So just understand that whichever way you go, know that education and school systems are a market first. Thank you.
Leanne Turada. Leanne, thank you.
Hi, I'm Leanne Turada. I'm a National Board Certified Teacher. I'm a parent of two young children at Escuela Bilingüe Pioneer, and I'm also the current PTA president there. I was reminded about the importance of a message and the value of a message when we all stood up, placed our hand on our heart, and we said the Pledge of Allegiance. It's something that we do at our school as well, and I just think it's really important to remind students of things of value. I'm also here to talk about internet safety, because I think it's really important that every day when a student has access to technology, they need to be somehow reminded of what are the goals and what are the safety measures to be able to use some type of technology that does really affect them. I really think it's important to think about digital citizenship as something that needs to be like a pledge of allegiance. I found a site that it says it's Boulder Valley School District Digital Citizens Site for Teachers and Parents. And it just makes me wonder why students are not included. Like, why aren't students, every day when they go to their computer class or in their English class or any subject that utilizes technology, why aren't they reminded of different things? Every day in my classroom, I remind my student, I point to my sign, "No electronic devices." Please turn it off and put it out of sight. Every day, every day I do that. And they know, high school students. But for my preschooler, and for my second grader, and all the way until you want them to graduate with success out of Boulder Valley Schools, this is a message that needs to be done every day, every time they access a screen, every time they access something, so they can be reminded, because their brains have not developed yet, to make those choices for themselves. The preschoolers are watching a video, and the teacher has not been trained to block the ad with a violent movie. I mean, some simple training for teachers to, if you're showing a YouTube video, block the ads. This is something that easily, as a district, that you can establish the message and really take small steps to make big differences. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Kelly Lopez.
I'm here to talk about internet safety as well. And I wanted to talk specifically about the G Suite for Education that Boulder Valley School District uses. We sent out a response notice to find out about information, documentation on how the Chromebooks use Google, and the information we got back was, "G Suite for Education is a click-through agreement. There is no negotiated agreement with Google." So I didn't know anything about G Suite for Education, so I just did a little bit of research. And there's different, G Suite has core services like Gmail, Calendar, and Classroom, and those do have ad-blocking on them, but there are also additional services, and those don't have ad-blocking. It's not targeted ads, but it's still ad-blocking, and I'm wondering if that's the pop-ups that happened, that happened to him. So I just want the school district to understand what they have signed off with G Suite. It says it's a click-through agreement. So what were the clicks? And we, as parents, deserve to know what those clicks were and what our kids have access to at school. And part of Google's information provides a notice template for schools when gathering parent or guardian consent. So they're suggesting that if schools implement this, they get parents' consent. So it gives all the information. What personal information does Google collect? How does Google use this information? Will Google disclose my child's personal information? Does Google use student personal information for users in K-12 schools in targeted advertising? The list goes on, and they recommend that parents sign this agreement, and that's the only way that their child can use the services, the G Suite. We don't have that, and it's not right. And I want to know from the last meeting, have you worked on getting a group for internet safety that you talked about? Tina and Richard, you both talked about getting a working group. Has that been set up?
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Blakiki.
I wanted to talk about the Stearns property for the proposed Summit School. I live about one block south of it, and our streets are still small and circuitous, just as they were when the BVSD planner wrote that letter in April of 2010, the one that Christine spoke of. I would just like to implore each and every board member to get in their cars and explore our neighborhood, especially at student drop-off and pickup times for Platt Middle School. It's really tough to get onto Baseline, and if you want to take a Rappa Ho, it's really very difficult to get on from Westview. And to think of it with a couple hundred more cars in our neighborhood, it's just unconscionable, I believe. Those streets were not made for or designed for that much traffic, and let's see here. They're tight enough, and to think of high school students possibly being there. The plan for the school that we have seen does not provide ample parking, so that means we would have hundreds of cars, well, maybe not hundreds, but a lot of cars lining our streets, being parked there by high schoolers. And it seems like it would be dangerous. It just doesn't work very well. And so I'm just going to ask each and every one of you to check out our neighborhood and see if you really feel like that's a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Emily Drilling.
I'm a law student at the University of Colorado right now, and I wanted to talk to you all today about the Boulder Valley School District curriculum. Specifically, I wanted to encourage you all to look at adding more constitutional rights coursework. As a current law student, my first taste of constitutional rights coursework was actually in my second semester of law school. When I was in high school, a long, long time ago, I learned about the Constitution, but I never really learned what it actually meant in practice. I knew there was freedom of speech and the right to bear arms, but I didn't actually know what those meant. I especially didn't know how those rights interfaced with my public school, to know what I could and could not do in such a context. In Tinker versus Des Moines, the U.S. Supreme Court said that students don't necessarily shed their constitutional rights at the schoolhouse gate. But how can students know if their constitutional rights are being impinged if they don't even know what those rights are? With the recent student walkouts and the Pledge of Allegiance incident at Angovine Middle School, it's important we teach our students their rights under the U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe that concludes public participation. Is that right, Laura? You've gotten through the list?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we'll move on now to board communication. Would any board members like to speak? Okay, no board communication? Shelley?
Ah, where to begin? So first of all, thank you to all of you for speaking on various topics that you've brought tonight. I'm in total agreement with those of you who are talking about internet filtering and safety and the use of Chromebooks in our school district, and sort of getting to a place where people are more comfortable on all levels with what we're doing in terms of filtering and protecting student data privacy and just the use of technology in general. So I know we have a committee, a DTAC committee, but it sounds like it may, I'm not exactly sure what the scope of that committee is, whether they should or are addressing these issues, but I think it would be good for there to be some communication between this group of parents and DTAC to decide, and us, to decide if we need an additional working group or not. It may be true that we absolutely do need it, because I'm not sure what DTAC, like I said, what their scope is. So thank you very much for bringing those issues tonight. To the last young woman who spoke about constitutional rights, I could not agree with you more. I remember my kids going to Boulder High School and having one teacher who spoke about constitutional rights in his classroom fairly frequently, and a couple of my kids' friends got stopped by the police, and they were well-versed in what to do in that situation, and they came back and reported in class on their interaction. And it just really impressed my kids and their friends how important it is to have that information and how much better prepared they were for that scenario when it happened to them. So I couldn't agree with you more about that. So I don't know, like, maybe it would be helpful, and I'll put in RFI on this, to understand whether that's consistently being taught in our high schools. I know it is at Boulder High. So I just want to point out that we have two retirements tonight on our personnel action. One is Mary Jo Bode, and the other is Mike Cuskely. And I want to acknowledge both of their services to Boulder Valley School District. Mary Jo and I worked together on the SB 191 Teacher Evaluation Committee, and she just did a terrific group, a terrific job leading that group through a really lengthy process and lasted over a year for sure, maybe almost two. And I think we ended up with a really good product, something really valuable that the district's using today. So I just want to say she'll be greatly missed, and I wish her all the best in her retirement. I also can't say enough about Mike Cuskely. He was extraordinarily helpful during the Casey air quality issue. He was completely transparent throughout the process. He really built a lot of trust with the parents and with the teachers at Casey, and also with the board members that were on that committee. So we're going to miss Mike very much, and so I hope you'll pass that on, Rob, or, you know, whoever works with him the most closely, and tell him how much we're going to miss him. I also want to let you know that the Athletic Review Committee is progressing nicely. We've met several times now, and most of our effort has been on designing a survey to go to parents and students, asking them how they feel about their program, their athletic program. And that survey was just completed this last round last night, and it will be going out to all the programs, I believe, in the coming week. So that's going to give the group a lot of feedback on the issues that are out there in the schools and how to proceed now with, you know, in various schools, what policies we may need to change, what procedures we may want to do differently. So we're off to a good start there. I also want to tell you I met with Allison Billings from the I Have a Dream Foundation, or Impact on Education. Thank you, Tina. And she just is so impressive, and I am like so glad that she's at the helm of that organization. She's really thinking strategically about how to partner with the district, and I think she's getting off to a great start. And last but not least, I want to thank all the NuVista parents who came forward tonight. Every year I attend the NuVista graduation, and I see those terrific, passionate, committed kids walking across the stage every year, and I can understand why the parents at NuVista are concerned that that program might get disrupted. And so I'm glad that we're, I think, coming to some agreement that that's probably not going to happen. So I want to thank all of you. And then just Omar, I just want to say I've watched you and your brothers play at Boulder High for years now, and congratulations to Omar wherever you are. That's just a terrific honor, and we're all so proud of you.
Donna?
I do have one thing to say. It's so good to hear from the community on all the different topics, because often that leads us to want more questions answered. And you heard Shelley say tonight, I'll put in an RFI on that. And it was brought to my attention this week by a couple of teachers in the district, as well as parents and community members, that, what do you mean, RFI? And I thought, I did my teacher thing, and I made a couple of visuals for you guys to see, but when we say we're going to put an RFI in on that request for information, a lot of people do not understand that you have the right to go read the information that we get from staff. So real quick, I want to just go over four little slides of how you do that. You go to the front page of our website, and in little tiny blue letters down here, it says "Board Agenda Documents and Minutes." You click on that. After you click on that, it'll take you to this screen, where you click on Library and then General. That will take you to this screen, where you click on Reports to the Board 2018. And then you finally get to this screen, where you can scroll down and see all the information that we get. And I just took this screenshot, and it's ParaImpact, Preliminary Budget, Budget Forecast, Project Search, Full Day Kindergarten for Schools, and Open Enrollment. And I could read on, but if Shelley puts this one in tonight, you'll see what our courses offer, or what classes we offer on the topic that the Gal constitutional rights that the CU student asked about. But there may be other RFIs, but you have the right to read those, too, in our library, and some people forget that that's there and for your access. Thanks.
I just want to join the board in thanking everybody that took the time out of their busy lives to come and talk to us. And also, I know that, I read at least several emails of people who indicated they were too nervous or too worried about coming and speaking in a public forum, and I just want to assure them that, I'm guessing I speak, and I'm pretty sure I speak on behalf of the whole board, that we read all those emails, and we take that into consideration and really appreciate you taking the time. And whether it was just by email or showing up, we really appreciate the community input on all the various topics, because that really helps us. And I hope we feel like you can come and talk to us, and you can send us emails, and that we can work through these challenging issues together. I agree with Shelley, and Tina, I think that we need to look at the scope of our district technology committee and see if we can be looking at these issues that you've brought forward about the data privacy and the issues around what children are having access to. I think that's a big concern, and so I think maybe we could look at what the DTAC committee's looking at and see if they can look at that issue. And then a couple of things. I was able to join staff, Cindy and Rob and Tina, and take a tour of NuVista as a Baseline Junior High School graduate 100 years ago. It looked a lot the same, sadly. A few additions. And I had followed NuVista for a long time. I remember when Rona started it and the program, and I've been really impressed with it. But I have to say, just the passion of the principal and the students and the people that we met with, and all of the passion and interest that we've seen from the community has helped educate me even more about the program that's there and what I can say. And I think I said this in many of my email responses, is that as a district, we're very fortunate in the opportunities we're able to provide to our high school students. And so it was nice to find that kind of opportunity in a richer way than I had been aware of without the tour. So thank you for taking the time for letting us do that, and I'm sure we'll be able to work through these issues somehow and provide the kinds of opportunities that we need to make sure all our students are successful. And then a couple other quick things. I was able, in my role as the president-elect of the Colorado Association of School Boards, to go to the National Association of School Boards meeting in San Antonio, and there were some really interesting speakers focused on issues like closing the achievement gap through something that, Richard, I'd like to explore with you, called Minority Scholars. That was a program that was working in the South that looked like it had some promise. Went to a couple talks on special education, and not surprisingly, didn't learn much, because I think we're doing a pretty nice job here on how we handle our special education. But it was a nice program, and if it wasn't so darn expensive, I think it would be a great thing for the board to go to. I saw a lot of boards working together and learning together. And since I was just by myself there, it kind of made me think it would be nice to be able to do that with some of my fellow board members at some point. And then Cindy, you talked about teacher salaries, and I was reminded of a report that just came out this week. And Colorado ranks the last in the entire country on average teacher salaries. We are fortunate and bolder to not be in that position. We are fortunate and bolder to not be in that position as a state. But I think we don't want to lose sight of the fact that we are dead last. And I think we do lose sight of that sometimes when we, when we are kind of looking at how successful and how lucky we are and bolder to have passed the mill levies and the additional resources that our community has given us to be able to provide that to our teachers. And even then, I know they struggle with being able to meet the high cost of living in Boulder and Boulder Valley School District. So, if anyone wants to read that report, it's The Washington Post published it just this last week. So, I just think it's important to kind of not lose sight of that, even though our teachers are continuing to want to work through this problem. I just think following what the teachers are doing in the different states is at least shining a light on the work that they do and how hard it is for them. And yet, they continue to show up every day for our kids and to do the best that they can. So, that's all I have. Thanks.
I appreciate everybody's comments tonight on a myriad of issues. I would echo your compliment and gratitude to Mary Jo and Mike. Thank you for reminding us of their service to the district. And I just, to, I think Ms. Kaufman, who spoke about bell times, start times, I think we're discussing that next week, maybe? Or it'll be part of the discussion at our quarterly planning session. And I'm hoping we'll be moving forward with looking at aligning our start times to fit the extensive body of research into what's best for student health and learning. And I wanted to mention that Richard and I joined Dr. Stevenson as members of cabinet at her table at the annual Parent Engagement Network event. And just wanted to acknowledge Penn for their great work in providing support to parents. There's no, as someone observed at that event, there's no test for being a parent. And we need training, we need support. And we heard moving testimonials to the effectiveness of Penn at that event. So, just to express my gratitude to the Parent Engagement Network and encourage you, if you don't know about them, to seek them out. They're very worthy of support and they can help.
Just a couple of comments. And I want to thank everybody that participated in public comment this evening. And I do want to find out and follow up on the, on that technical advisory group committee because I know that we did mention it at the last meeting and we were, at least I was hoping that we could start a working group. And then I was reminded that we have that committee already working. But where is it at? What is it doing? And how can we get those two to work together? Because the testimonials that I heard tonight about the, from the parents, I think, are disturbing and really critical enough that we need to start doing something with that issue. So, as soon as we can get that information, I'd appreciate it. I know that Andrew's walking to the podium. I don't know if he's going to talk about it or not, but...
It's up to you. I do have one update that I think would be helpful.
It's up to you, Tina. Sure.
Dr. Stevenson has a document that I've asked her to forward on to you. DTAC's last meeting of the school year is on May 1st. The only agenda topic is on web filtering and cybersecurity. So, we've got that scheduled. Two weeks later, we have a study session on the same topic with all of you. Okay?
Just a quick question, if I may. Are you going to be looking at incidents of the incidents that have been reported here?
I'll be able to address the many different aspects of web filtering, cybersecurity. There are a number of questions that we really need guidance from you. And they're wrapped around different things we could do, but there are funding implications, there are resource implications. It's a, it's a broad topic that isn't just a technology topic.
So, when can we put that on the, on the agenda or whatever?
Yeah, let's not do a Q and A right now. So, let's, so we have something on the agenda?
May 15th.
May 15th. Now, would that make it time for budget? That's the only question I have.
That'll be a bill question.
Okay. Just while people are here, though, Tina, Andrew, is that meeting, the DTAC meeting, open to people if they want to come?
Absolutely.
And where is it located?
It will be here at the Ed Center on May 1st.
May 1st, okay. What time?
I'll have to double check. I think it starts at 4:30.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that. It may be four, it may be five. Yep. I'm close within 30 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks. And then I want to just reiterate again the congratulations that we provided to Omar. I think that was wonderful for the school board to do that. I think it's great. And also, Donna, thank you so much for the tutorial on the RFI stuff because I have an RFI pending and I know that it's taking more than three hours. So, the board's going to have to decide on what to do with that. And I think, Tina, you got that information correct. So, okay. So, hopefully, we can decide on what we're going to do with that RFI. And the, last but not least, the young lady that came up and talked about the BVSD curriculum, all more constitutional rights, et cetera. Well, I think that's clearly something that we should look at because as a student at the University of Colorado, I took one class in constitutional law. And let me tell you, it was tough if you don't have any kind of background information on it. So, you know, whatever we can do with that, that would be great. And for the NuVista parents and also for the Summit Parents, thank you so much for your participation tonight. I just want to let you know that my daughter, I think, was the third generation of NuVista students that graduated from NuVista. And I do know the program at NuVista and appreciate what they're doing, et cetera. And I also want to say that after reading the proposal from Summit Middle School, from Summit Academy, it didn't seem like they were going to entrench on anything at NuVista at all. So, I just want you all to know that. And I'm also glad that maybe it's off the table too. So, thank you.
Tina, just, can I follow up on something?
Sure.
So, Richard, you just reminded me that every time we get a response back from the district that says our request for information is going to take longer than three hours to respond to, it reminds me that we really do need a process then for bringing those requests to the board table to vote on whether we want the district to spend that amount of time or not. And in the length of time I've been on this board, that's not been part of the process. So, how can we, how can we make that part of the process?
So, the way we've been treating that for the last year, but we're doing it now, is RFIs that exceed three hours are being then deferred to the quarterly prioritization. So, for the prioritization, the quarterly meeting we're having next Tuesday, the RFI that he submitted, that Richard submitted, will vote on them and will all prioritize it as a board along with the other larger projects or information requests that we're interested in.
So, it could take months then after somebody's denied?
You know, so it could. And I think that's a, but that's, that's how we decided to do this about a year ago. And it could be something that we revisit, particularly when Rob starts. So, and we can think about how we can revisit what staff, you know, what their bandwidth is. And because we can't just keep pumping down projects because of some time constraint.
No, I'm not sure we have to revisit their bandwidth. I just think we should probably, every time that issue comes up, it should go on a list for the very next board meeting to vote on.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying.
Not wait till quarterly planning.
We should talk about how to do that and just, and talk about it with staff so it can work.
This is a really stupid question, but if two people had the same RFI, would that be worth six hours?
No.
No. No, sorry, Donna. Yeah, I think that was good math, but it comes down to what do you want your staff to be doing? And if an RFI takes longer than three hours, it really does, we really do need to know that more than one board member is interested in that topic.
Or maybe more than two. Okay. And so, yeah, I just wanted to, Donna, I love your screenshots. In January, when I went to the DAC meeting, I did the exact same thing but without the screenshots. And you'll notice sometimes if you ask a question online, I'll ask you to put it through the RFI process. And the only reason I'm doing that is so that everything that happens online that you can't hear right now is public. And you'll also notice we're trying to tape a lot more meetings. And a lot of this is just around transparency so that there isn't board discussion happening that the public isn't privy to. So, so please don't get offended if I say I need an RFI. The reason is I want the public to have all the information that we have so they understand how the decisions are being made. And that's a really, really high priority to me. I wanted to thank the NuVista parents as well. I learned so much about the program. And Kathy, I'm a little disappointed you forgot that when we visited one of the classrooms, they were studying the Declaration of Independence. So, going back to the constitutional rights, I think we now have at least two schools that are covering some of that ground. And it was a great class that we got to visit when we visited the school. I was also stunned at the condition of the high school. And I hope that we could take some time to think about how we can create and make sure that the building reflects the program as all of our other buildings reflect the programs in the district. And then in terms of Lake Shore, I think that we're not there at all with locations for the Summit High School. I do know that no matter what happens, there'll be a traffic study. And so, that's one, one piece of that process that I would imagine would happen. And that's all I have to say. Oh, and I just wanted to echo what Shelley said. I also got to meet Allison Billings. It was a little tricky because she asked me to help host the Impact on Education Teacher Awards, and that's not a strength of mine. So, but I had a wonderful time at the event and Allison just seemed to do a terrific job. So, it's really exciting. I think that you've all also received an invitation for Impact on Education's fundraiser on June 1st. Razzle Dazzle, it will be at the Louisville Community Park, I think. So, I hope that board members can make it. I won't be able to be there myself. And please remember to RSVP. So, with that, we can go on to our information items. And we'll start with anyone who wants to talk about legislative updates. Any thoughts? Okay.
Just a brief update, the budget, the long bill. You made it through the House with 100 and some amendments, made it through the Senate with 100 and some amendments. It did keep in the buydown of the negative factor. I don't think any, some buydown of the para unfunded liability, but now it has to go to conference committee. So, we'll have to wait and see, but at least it made those big pieces of the, of the budget, made it through, that could have a definite impact on our budget.
Any other questions or thoughts about legislation? On April 24th, we'll have Ernestine or Tanya, Ernestine or Tanya is going to come and do a legislative update. So, that'll be a treat. Thank you, Laura, for scheduling that. Now, we have graduation requirements. We have some people coming up to the podium.
Good evening. We have the high school principals here to talk about the implementation of the class of 2021 new graduation requirements. You'll recall that in 2015, the Colorado Department of Education implemented new graduation requirements for the class of 2021. That class is now ninth graders registering for their 10th grade year. We went through a series of about 20 community input meetings with SAC, DAC, parent meetings at the high school, parent meetings at the middle school, two rounds of them, English meetings, Spanish sessions as well to gather input. And then in January 2017, the Board of Education adopted all of the options available through the Colorado Department of Education's menu of options. And so, we spent the last year talking about what that looks like, finalizing the capstone, which we shared with you at the work session in January 2018. And today, we are finally here to talk to you about our plan for implementation. So, James Hill, Principal at Boulder High, Kirk Quitter, Principal at NuVista, Ginger Ramsey, Principal at Broomfield High School, and Neil Anderson, Principal at Monarch. I couldn't remember who was behind me. We'll take over from here. Thanks.
Hello again. So, graduation implementation, you can see, the primary change, as Michelle mentioned, is that, starting with the graduating class of 2021, all graduates will now be required to demonstrate proficiency in English and in math. And as a district has adopted that menu of options, and we provided a link here so you could click through if you want to see all of those options. As far as testing goes, in addition, students can complete a capstone or industry certificate or concurrent enrollment. So, we recognize that one student may have two or more different pathways to demonstrate proficiency in English and math. So, how do we track that? The way that we're, we're going to be doing this is through the creation of a new class. And curriculum and instruction, school leadership and IT are creating those new courses. So, at the beginning of, during registration, students will register for one of these graduation proficiency courses. And they'll pick one for English and they'll pick one for math. That course selection's going to appear on their schedule when they're juniors. And we'll, we'll be tracking that. And we'll talk a little bit more about how we track that moving forward. But once students have demonstrated proficiency, they'll be able to get a P for pass, showing that they have demonstrated that in English or math. And we'll talk a little bit, if they struggle, they may have the opportunity then to revisit which pathway they've selected. And we'll, Neil's going to talk about who and when, just next.
Thank you, Kurt. Students register for their preferred method during registration process of their junior year. That's what Mr. Quitter just spoke about. And if a student needs or wants, between that point and the time they graduate, to change their selected graduation method, they certainly can. We don't want to make sure, we don't want to require a student, when they select it at the end of their sophomore year, to all of a sudden say, that's what you must do because students definitely change and experiences definitely can dictate that change. We want to be supportive of the student in their change. The documentation of these state graduation requirements is important. And in doing so, as Kurt spoke about, we're going to have students select their method. And that's going to turn into a class, as it would show, without having to take a class. It would be a placeholder there. And this will help us track students and what they actually selected. And we'll be able to monitor, monitor that as we move through their junior and senior years. And as we change the grade to pass, that will be important. And school personnel, parents and students would be able to track that and they'd be able to keep track and show that the student has shown, demonstrated proficiency in their selected area. How will we support this? In any new implementation, it's important that we take time to support that because adding layers onto already layers is sometimes difficult. And so, through a thoughtful process, this coming year, where each school is going to be provided a stipend of $2,500 for a graduation specialist that each one of our schools will identify and work with to set up and plan for our implementation. What are the systems and structures associated with that? This individual will help plan their school's protocols and will be required to participate in monthly collaboration meetings because we want to generate thought and supports and doing so collaboratively is better than doing so in isolation. In 2019 and 2020, this is important because it's a future ask. The idea would be that large schools will receive some FTE. We've identified point two, while small schools would continue to receive a stipend allocation for that graduation specialist. This person will be the key point person to monitor, record when proficiency is completed. They build the connections with the students, they build that relationship with the parents, and we make sure that we are achieving the stated goals in the state of Colorado graduation requirements. To do that, we need to have communication. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ginger Ramsey, the Principal of Broomfield High School, who'll talk about how we support our community in this transition.
Good evening and thank you for letting us come and talk with you about this. If you look at this slide, you can tell that high school principals tend to like to have lots of meetings. We've had a lot of meetings in the past sharing this information with the class of 2021. And we are now welcoming the class of 2022 to our high schools, which is pretty scary when you hear the term 2022. This spring, before school is out, we are going to be having meetings at each of our high schools to share this information with our incoming freshman parents as well as communicating that with our current freshman parents as they will be, this will be impacting them. This is something new. So, we need to make sure that we're sharing information and listening to parents' concerns because this is a graduation requirement above and beyond the 220 credits that we require for Boulder Valley. Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you. Questions? Kitty?
Yeah, I'm just curious about demonstrating math and what level of math is required to be proficient. I mean, do they have to be calculus, algebra, geometry, arithmetic?
They can earn it in several different ways. And I would encourage you, and Kitty, I'd be happy to sit down with you and go through that. It can be, they could earn it, our juniors took the SAT today. And if they earn a certain score on the SAT in math and English, then they will have fulfilled that requirement. So, there's a lot of different options for them.
Okay. Thanks.
So, the class is just something that shows up on a transcript. They aren't actually doing a class.
That is correct. So, on their schedule, we, it would be printed in a class period. For me, it will probably be period eight because I don't have For me, it will probably be period eight because I don't have a period eight. But it will be just there so that then in Infinite Campus, we can print those lists to know which way students have selected.
And then how, what's the safety net? So the kids take the SAT, they don't get the score. Who's monitoring that to make sure and help them through their senior year as a safety net?
Very good question. That is our graduation specialist that Neil referred to is almost our key warrior. We're all going to be worrying about students who didn't do what they thought they would be able to do. But having all of this information, this is not something I personally, as a principal, want to be worrying about it in May of their senior year. I want to be worrying about it in May of their junior year.
And then students on IEPs, I assume can write IEPs around these graduation requirements?
Absolutely.
Richard?
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do you have any idea on how many students potentially might not be able to reach the graduation requirements? I'm thinking about the graduation specialist that you're thinking about, you know, is that the workload?
So ideally, we create the class by the method that the individual students are taking it. And then the chief warrior can sort, for example, here are the students that are taking the SAT. So when the SAT scores come in, if they've met the English threshold, they can change that grade to pass. If they didn't meet the threshold for math, they can call them in and talk to them about, here's the menu of options, what else do you want to look at? They could retake the SAT, they could take a different test, they could do the capstone. There's a wide variety, there's 11 different options. And so that's the key for that graduation specialist, to note that they've passed the English, and then to reach out and contact about how are we going to do the math? And then continue to keep them on that math list as an incomplete in that course. And so it'll really be up to the individual. Some students will want to retake the SAT. In general, we think about 80% of our students will simply buy the SAT, which is given free to all students in Boulder Valley schools at the state's expense, will be able to meet both thresholds in math and language arts. So that leaves about 20% of our students. But that doesn't mean that they won't be able to meet it in a different method. We think that we have a wide variety of methods for individual students to do it. And as the question was raised about special education students, ELD students and TAG students also are waived under the state requirement to be able to write some different qualifications for them.
So what's the plan in terms of the graduation specialist or that point two later?
So next year in the fall, we'll spend time coming together.
Let me finish my question here first.
Okay, sorry.
In terms of the articulation between that person and your counselors?
So that person may be a counselor and a portion of their FTE is allocated to graduation specialists. That person may be a teacher in the building, that their job would be to connect with the counselors. But the counselors are looking at the 220 credits and the schedule applications and the four-year plan. And the graduation specialist, as identified by the principal in that building, will be the chief warrior for this element. We didn't want to assign it just carte blanche to the counselors as an additional responsibility. They have a caseload of 450 to one. And to just add this requirement on to them seems very unfair. And so we're trying to divide and conquer and provide a little bit of resource for an individual to be able to track this.
Good. The other question that I have is around, I know that we're talking about graduation requirements now here, but I'm very interested to find out if you have had any conversations with Samantha around the biliteracy seal work that she is doing.
So we've been working with Kristen and Sam on the biliteracy seal and you are correct that that doesn't come into play in the graduation requirements, but it is something that we are going to continue working with our high school principals on recognizing probably as early as this year.
Because some of the things that you mentioned here, as it relates to the English proficiency, for example, how do you measure biliteracy proficiency once that is established? Just a side comment or question?
And the state's given us lots of guidance on how to measure those biliteracy elements. And some of those may be able to be rolled into the capstone and applied automatically.
Thank you.
Dawn?
So in a follow-up to Richard's question, on the graduation specialist, the difference between the graduation specialist and the counselor, you said the ratio is 450 to one. What might this graduation specialist ratio be?
So I have a saying I'm very famous for, inch by inch, life is a cinch and yard by yard, life is hard. And so hopefully, the graduation specialist is taking the senior class as their juniors and starting to check away at that. As I said, for the students who take the SAT, when their test scores come in in August, they can clear all those students who have passed in language arts or in math. And then their course list of students starts to diminish to just the students who haven't received the pass. And that keeps them focused on who has not completed it. But any given class can be six, 400? 400 to 500 students for that graduation specialist in any given year, but the work's spread over two years.
Okay. That helps me understand a little more. The graduation specialist, did you say is a point two?
So next year, in the fall, it's a, each semester, it's a $1,250 stipend. In the fall, we're going to be planning for what does implementation look like at Broomfield? Because Broomfield's different than Fairview. What does Fairview look like? We'll bring them together monthly to talk about, this is what we're talking in, about doing in our building, this is who is doing it, and meet together, August through December. And then they should have everything ready for their rollout for registration in February and March. And then they'll have their first class register in March, May, and then they'll start tracking in the junior year of those students.
Sam or Shelley?
Just quickly on the ability of students to change their selected method, can they do that more than once?
Absolutely. And there will be no, you know, as you drop classes, there sometimes is a withdrawal fail. There'll be no record on the transcript of the option being dropped. It's just literally meant to put them in that graduation specialist bucket. So you were in the SAT bucket, you decided not to do that for math, so now we're going to move you over to the AP bucket, or we're going to move you to the capstone bucket. And so by registering for that class, we're able to watch them as they're navigating and then call upon them to ask them what help they need in that place or if they want to change.
Great. Well, thank you for your work, all of you and your leadership on this. Is there a particular piece of this, I mean, this is a big deal, that you're most concerned about? I think the communication piece is pretty big, but...
The communication and tracking. And that's the other element of having it as a class. A parent can get into the IC portal, a student can get into the IC portal, a mentor teacher can get into the IC portal, everyone will be able to see it. And so making sure no one falls through the cracks and that we catch it in enough time. And then also making sure that we're shifting the why on how will I ever use this to, this is how I'll apply it in life. So if I'm going to go into the military and I want to use the ASVAB as my method, then I should do that. If I want to go to a four-year college and I want to use my SAT, then I should do that. So really trying to help the student find meaning.
One thing I would add to this is, we've spoken a lot about this graduation requirement, but the actual discussion around graduation starts when the student is coming as a freshman year. And so I know all our counselors go to ICAP lessons and they give high school graduation presentations to each one of the classes individually. And through that presentation, they speak about this. So the conversation really begins at the freshman level, as they come in as ninth graders. And it's built upon each one of the years. So it's not a standalone only at the end of the sophomore year, but it's something that our parents in our community and our students in particular are constantly engaged with. And I know we did that this year for our current ninth graders. And I know we'll be doing that each one of the years and it builds upon each one of our high schools as they get ready to not only apply, but then graduate from our high schools, our great schools, and move into their education beyond our high schools. So I want to make sure we layered that into, that it's not just now, it's built each one of the four years.
Right. Thank you.
I had a question going back to the Infinite Campus and the parent communication. Mark Schaefer had a high school feedback session a year or two ago. And one of the pieces of feedback was whether Infinite Campus or some other tool could proactively notify when you're falling short of a graduation requirement. And similar to this, is there a way to create a red light or an alert that goes out to the parent and the student so that it's not a, it's push, not pull? It's not me as a parent with a child going into ninth grade saying, oh, I wonder if she's met that? Like, that's probably not going to happen. So I'm just wondering, how can it be more of a push?
So we'll work on that as we're implementing the MyApp, which is part of the system that you're talking about, pushing that information out to parents. And then working with the graduation specialist on really pushing that information out as well, to their individual buckets. And how do they use that time? Which is why a point two in a school day, a designated hour per day, every day of the year for two years, that they can really track and implement that. So I will definitely put that in my notes for the graduation specialist meeting next fall.
Thank you. Kathy?
As you said, the state pays for the SAT, who pays for the retake of the SATs?
We've talked about the concept of bucket of money to help students who need to retake and need financial assistance with that. And we don't have an idea of how large that would be until we really start talking to students. But between the secondary budget contingency that we'll try to hold aside is what we'll use the first year. And then there'll be juniors and that'll give us a better idea of what we would need in contingency for the senior year.
So will there be an ask for at least a small contingency amount to be able to provide that, the testing fees for the, at least for the free and reduced lunch families?
So we fully intend to provide it for all the free and reduced lunch, as well as other students. Right now in the budget, we have a $4,000 contingency for an expulsion hearing officer. And I'm proud to say, we haven't expelled a student in two years. And so that money is there and available. And so that's the initial pot that I'm thinking about using as long as we stay on our current theory of behavior.
And then, do each of the schools, high schools, have sufficient resources to offer capstones to those students who want to pursue capstones? I was thinking Boulder and Fairview mostly because of the size, but Monarch too.
So I have a, say a graduating class of 425-ish this coming year. And the capstone is unique because it really allows a student to gear their work to their individual interests. And I believe that through the strong staff that we all have, not only at Monarch, but all our schools, we'd be able to channel that student's interest into a staff member that also has that shared interest. I'll use Science Research Seminar, for example. We have students right now that are engaging in scientific research with University of Colorado professors and others in the community. And then they develop and write their scientific project up and present it. That would be a component of a capstone that that student would be able to do, where they design their research study, they implement their research study, they present their research study to a field of experts with a write-up and so on and so forth. So I think we'd be able to manage it. I think if every student would say, I want to do a capstone, that might get interesting. But at the same time, as Michelle spoke about, a large majority of our students would meet the graduation requirements through the SAT or ACT as the two primary sources of assessments that our students currently take. Would my colleagues agree? Yeah?
And then one more question, will there be an opportunity to get feedback to the board after you've had the meetings with parents, so we can find out what concerns or how those meetings are going? Just some kind of check back in or some kind of feedback?
Sure, we'd be glad to come back either in June or maybe early August, as well as an update from the graduation specialist meetings, maybe in November.
Other questions, board members? Everyone good? All right, well, thank you so much for all this information. Really appreciate it. Okay, so are, do people need a break now? Okay, great.
Okay, great. So we're going to take a five-minute break.[263.88]
Minor change from current year funding. Next is a revenue summary. So, the 3.4% increase in net PPR is $9 million. Additional student FTE, so those 43 FTE, $300,000. The 25% mill levy override, which is applied to those new revenues, is $2.5 million. And then other revenue is a half a million. That other revenue, things like charter services, we get revenue from charter schools for the services we provide, categorical funding and indirect costs for grants. So, next is transfers. So, the charter schools, of course, they would receive their funding for that 3.4% increase as well as those new students. And their portion of the override as their contracts currently contain. Transfers to other funds, mostly this is risk management for our workers' comp insurance where a premium increase for workers' comp. Next, we have compensation included in the budget right now. 3.4% cost of living adjustment for all employees. STEPS Lane is an attrition, so it's all movement on salary schedules, $2.5 million. PARA rate increase, so this is, I'll talk more about this later, PARA specifically. But this is current law with the final component of the 2018 calendar year rate increase. And then we have a 5% increase for health and dental insurance for 1.1 million. Next, these are the new expenditures included in the budget. These were all what was reviewed back on the March 20th work session, so these are all components within that. Elementary counselors, phase two, two ILC classrooms for special ed. Expanding preschool classrooms, which is one classroom, singular. Expanding and supporting high school campus monitors. Ops and maintenance services, which are the supplies and materials for fixing schools. And then fees, contracts and other software items for a total of 3 million. Also, network firewall, that was included in the discussion a couple of weeks ago. Vehicle fuel, this is a new one, this came up just last week. $100,000 transferred to the transportation fund for vehicle fuel, diesel and gas. The SRA, School Resource Allocation Reset, I discussed this back on the February 27th in combination with that elimination of the Strategic Initiatives Department. So, this is a completely new SRA funding formula that resets a portion of those 2.25% classroom cuts, or school cuts rather. So, distributes dollars out on a very straightforward, easy to understand per student allocation for a base amount plus an amount for students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, special education and ELD. And also preschool is a component of that as well. Again, as I mentioned, the elimination of the Strategic Initiatives Department, an elimination of the teen parenting program. There's a report, I believe, that went out to the board regarding that. Next, we have pending legislative impacts. These were mentioned earlier in the meeting during legislative update. So, that $150 million negative factor buydown, so an improvement in the situation around the negative factor. It's about 5.1 million, so that credit is a benefit to the district, so that's new revenue coming in. PERA, net to gross calculation. So, this is one component of all the possible changes that exist under the PARA law that's hopefully going to be finalized. And the pre-tax deductions for dependent care and healthcare expenses. So, they can also be taken by the employee's choice before the calculation of PARA-includable salary. So, that reduces somebody's salary, which then reduces the amount of PARA we have to pay on it. So, what this does is this eliminates that choice for the employee to do that and just calculates all that on gross pay. And it does cost, it's come at a cost to the district, 1.3 million, but also to employees as well. So, the charter schools would receive their portion of the negative factor buydown. And then CPP, the preschool program, would also receive a small portion of that, per pupil amount relative to that. The one-time uses, again, also reviewed back on March 20th. Staffing reserve, digital communications revisioning, phase two, dyslexia supports, IT, security audit, software contract. VISLAB, so VISLAB is the tool that schools and classroom teachers can use to look at data around student performance. Maintenance and operations support, so this is some work to go out and catalog all our needs in the district around maintenance. Kind of the big, big needs around maintenance to be able to do a more preventative maintenance program. Standards and curriculum revision, math intervention, structures and tools. And then, of course, whenever we get new revenue, we have to apply the 3% taper and contingency reserve. So, that's 5.2 million in one-time uses. Quick little summary of the ongoing impacts to the general fund. So, resources, transfers, compensation, other expenditures were a little upside down at this point. The legislature is working on school funding still. We have not included an increase in the operational mill levy in this plan. So, we're talking 1.6 million out of 350-ish million. So, there's room to move, I would say. And we can certainly make adjustments to that operational mill levy up until December with the revised budget process as well. This is summary of the one-time uses, so there's about $2 million remaining in one-time funds. This could be held as fund balance like we did last year or allocated to a one-time use. Next, I'll talk about the outstanding legislative impacts. So, the School Finance Act and the negative factor reduction that's built in there. So, this will drop, the School Finance Act will drop after the long bill is finalized. I believe it's in conference committee now, so they kind of have to build the total budget for the state. And then they'll work out the details for School Finance Act, for the school finance. Most of it is done, I would say, but there could be some further tweaking around the edges, hopefully in a positive direction for us. For PERA, so there are lots of options that could affect us. The PARA Board put out a proposal, a recommendation for bringing the PARA program up to a full funding within 30 years. Senate Bill 200 was introduced that had some components of the PARA Board proposal and some new components. And then, and some amendments that took some components out. So, it came out of the Senate and it's going into the House, I believe, next week. So, the biggest component for us certainly are changes to the employee rate or the employer rate. Current employee rate's 8%, and the employer rate is 20.15%. A 1% change in the rate is about 2.4 million, whether that's for an employee or employer, same number. So, it's certainly a big number to work with. There is currently, as was mentioned, money set aside in the long bill, 225 million to address the PARA underfunding shortfall liability right now. This 225 million is for higher education, the state departments and K-12. So, not just K-12 education, it is more than that. There is lots of discussion as to how to distribute that money. Whether to distribute it at all or to directly funnel it to PARA, which kind of cuts out the inefficient process of funneling it through districts and higher ed and how to allocate it to charter schools versus the district versus districts that have grant funding and are paying into PARA. And there's lots of components to why it would be challenging to funnel it through. But it's a dollar amount that is set aside. It's to address both the employee and employer component, whatever is changed. So, that certainly needs to work its way through the process to find out how that will impact us and what it will take to implement that if there are changes, both on the employee and employer side. One other item that I don't have on here that I think is worth mentioning is the $35 million that's currently set aside for school security. My understanding is that it is one-time dollars from a tobacco settlement. So, although there has been terminology thrown around about using it for school resource officers, that would be somewhat challenging with one-time resources to commit to an ongoing expense around school resource officers. Facilities, certainly investment facilities to improve the security facilities. There are also suggestions that it would be used for mental health or other services for students. So, those dollars are in the budget at the state level. How it would be distributed is not clear. Or whether it's going to stay or get distributed in just a per pupil amount and then districts get to decide, it's really challenging to know at this point because there's some very philosophical differences to what it would be used for. Finally, next steps as we work our way through the rest of the process. So, we have a work session next week for further discussion on the budgets. We will have a five-year budget projections. And a final version of the 2018-19 Strategic Financial Plan. We did review that back on January 23rd, it was a draft version. We have the updated numbers from the revised budget as well as, you know, the final adopted budget development priorities and the final information around the CPI and those kind of things included in that. So, that'll be a brief discussion, but just having that document finalized. Legislation, or legislature session ends on May 10th. And I believe certainly that PARA will probably go quite a ways up to the end before we know exactly how that is going to shake out. On May 22nd, we have a work session for public budget input, like we did last year. Work session with the board for community and public to give input on the proposed budget. And then the regular board meeting that same night, the budget will be available for a study item. And then we're scheduled for adoption of the budget on June 12th. The end.
Okay. Any questions? I'll start with a question. You mentioned that we wouldn't be increasing the mill levy override?
Correct.
What would have been our option?
I would say we haven't included it in this, as a slight clarification. The option would be to increase it by one mil. We're currently at 2.709 mil, so we could go to 3.709 with our maximum of four mils available that's been authorized.
And what does that translate into dollars again?
Six to seven million for one mil.
So, in this case, what would be the reasoning not to increase it?
Certainly, one thing to think about would be whether there will be another or a ballot item this fall for folks to decide on, not from the district, as a statewide measure. Whether rolling out more programs at this point in time is feasible at some level. And certainly, we have a new superintendent coming on board and so making some decisions around that. And that's up to you guys to make that decision, but sort of keeping that in the back pocket, so to speak, as an option down the road.
Okay, I just, it kind of makes me hearken back to the MOU with the Teachers Association about if we have the opportunity to expend excess monies to help with some of the gaps with the FRL and the ELD and the sped populations. I am always interested in that. I'm not seeing, I'd like to understand, you know, what, how this budget will move those gaps. And if we need to do more, I'd like to do more. So, that's just a general comment I have. Thank you.
Kathy?
An add to your list, Jeanne, I would like to figure out how to start having the conversation about full-day kindergarten.
Donna? To add to that, on your, on the sheet that you sent us, it pretty much followed along with what you were going through there. And I was kind of trying to compare the notes, but so earlier today, I put, let's see, under the adjustments on the general operating fund, you have the Wilson Intervention for Students with IEPs. But does that also include, and somewhere over here, I forgot where it was, oh, on the next page, on page three, the dyslexia supports, is that talking about a screener?
I don't believe it is specifically about a screener, but we can certainly get back to you with the more specific details of what's included in that.
Yeah, I was wondering on that one, and then I had several questions, but I'm only going to hit on a few of them. What drives the increase on the Health Dental Plan?
Usage, and we have an outside consultant, Gallagher, who does this. They're an actuarial company that does this and negotiates with the providers and then does a projection on what we're going to need in that fund to maintain the program that we have.
So, is it pretty typical yearly that it increases about?
Let's see, so the three-year contract from 2012 through 2013, '14, '14, '15, those had, I think, 7.5% increases built in each year. Then the next three years, this year being the last one, we had contracted in the employee contracts a 4.8% increase each year, but we were able to skip the middle year. So, we did 4.80 and 4.8 again. So, 5% is kind of in the ballpark of, and very, very low for-
It's very low. That was one of the things that we talked about in the superintendent's meeting. The increases were up to 15 and 17% in some of the districts. And so, we've been very fortunate in Boulder Valley.
It's a self-funded plan, so we manage it ourself. And we have stop-loss insurance and all kinds of that stuff in there. But it's, the increases have been very low for a long, long time compared to our peers.
Okay, other questions? Shelley?
So, so just help me, Bill, understand if I'm looking at this correctly because it's slightly different format than we had last time, I think. So, if I just look at page one and add the total ongoing available of 12.4 million and the transfer adjustments, that nets out to about 10.1 million. You with me? And then you compare that, that, those, that revenue amount with just the compensation increase. We're in the red, about $2.9 million, just right there, right? So, our, so obviously, that's going to have to, we're going to have to reduce some services just looking at page one here. So, just stay with me because we go to page two then, and I have a couple of questions on page two. Is the 5.1 million, the budget stabilization, is that, is that an ongoing adjustment? Or is that a, that's an ongoing, okay, so that's ongoing funds. So, so it's matched up with these ongoing expenditures, right? So, we're, on page two, we're $400,000 to the good, right? Bringing in 3.8 million and expending 3.4, right?
And carrying forward the $2 million from the previous page, so the bottom line of 1.6.
Yeah, okay, but I'm just, if you take that 0.4 that we come out ahead on page two and net it against the 2.9 million that we're in the red on page one, then it looks like we're losing about $2.5 million in potential services to students so far. I'm just looking at it slightly different than, differently than the way it's laid out here, but-
So, the, on page one, the revenue coming in is 12.4.
Right.
And we subtract 1.3.
Right, and that's sort of your revenue right there, those two pieces, right?
11.1, and then we take away the 13, that's why it's a negative 2 million. I don't know where you're getting 2.9. It's 1.9.
Okay, that's right.
Okay.
So, then that's 1.9, so then that just changes it to 1.5 then that we're down, right? Which is what you have on page two.
Correct.
And then, so you go to page three, the unencumbered ending fund balance. That's the sum of all those numbers in the right-hand column, right, from the very beginning here?
No.
Where does that number come from?
That is our mid-year projection for what we will have available, available to spend, one-time dollars to carry forward into next year. It's a combination of-
Okay.
underspending, we adopted a budget with a balance in it and sort of all those pieces.
That's a version of the number we talked about earlier in the prior budget session about- Okay. So, that is going against the one-time needs here.
Correct.
Leaving 2.2 million available of one-time funds going forward, which she said we could hold till next year or spend on something. Okay. All right, so then a couple, I just want to make sure I understood all of it. And then a couple of specific questions. So, how does the PARA number that you have there on page one, the rate of no change from 20? What is that, 20.15%? Okay, no change from that, how's that relate then to the comment on the next page about?
Net to gross.
Yeah, the net to gross, how are those two related?
So, as the law was changed with the PARA rate, a number of years ago, Senate Bill 1 to make it funded, they increased the rate that the employers paid. It was a 0.9 for a few years, then 0.5, so they did a 0.5. And they do it in a calendar year instead of a fiscal year, which is kind of challenging to deal with. So, it's a blended rate, less for the first half, more for the second half of the year that we have to deal with any, within, in any one budget year. So, this, that half a million dollars on the first page there is the second half of that half a percent for the 2018 calendar year.
Gotcha. Wow.
We've been dealing with that for, whatever it is, eight years now.
Okay. All right, I think that's all my questions, thank you.
Sam? Do you have any questions?
Oh, I have one more, sorry. So, the standards and curriculum revision, 523,000. So, I remember asking Sam about that and she said that that was spread out over several years.
Correct.
Are we, is this the piece in year one or is this all of it?
This is the whole, the whole thing.
So, why is it all then in one year if it's going to be spread out over multiple years?
To set it aside and say, you know, we're going to do this, we're going to fund it. We'll have a reserve for that to spend it out over the next, the three years, I think, that it was included.
Okay, but we don't absolutely have to do that at this point?
Correct.
Okay, are there any other expenditures like that, that we're doing that with?
Let's see if I remember, on the one-time list, that was particularly the one-time list that was like that. The Wilson might be, but I'm not 100% sure. We can find, we'll get a answer to you on that.
Thank you.
Rather than just make stuff up.
Yep.
Sam?
Just going to add to the many worthy considerations Bill offered for not raising the operating mill. The fact that the increased valuations have hit property owners pretty hard and I want to take that into consideration as well. I'm certainly willing to talk about it, but it's on my mind.
Yeah, for sure, thanks. Donna, do you, do you have any other questions over here? Richard or Kathy first?
I just was curious if I heard you right, that the share of the budget stabilization buydown is ongoing? I mean, can't they change that from year to year depending on the state of the budget?
Certainly.
So, we can't count on that as income from year to year? I think of that as one-time.
I wouldn't, then the entire amount of the factor funding that we receive would be considered one-time because they could throw the negative factor all the way up to the total.
Well, I know.
Our practice has been that any negative factor buydown that is stated is ongoing because they typically will say that, whether it's ongoing or one-time. But this has been stated that it's a ongoing buy-down.
But we've certainly seen it go up and down. I just get nervous budgeting to that, that's all.
Kathy, that's why I asked, because if it's, if it's one-time, then we need to apply it to one-time expenditures because, to be consistent with our policy, so.
Any other questions? No, all right, well, thank you. And I think we'll move next to Policy JKA with Melissa.
So, the study item on Policy JKA is the use of physical intervention and restraint policy. And so, as presented tonight are really just some technical legal updates to the policy and also to the regulation for your information. So, basically, the changes that are proposed aren't going to result in any change in the day-to-day practice or the training that we offer our employees around restraint. The Department of Education implemented rules in 2010 and they were very comprehensive. And so, we spent a lot of time on our policy at that point. And then with the last legislative session, they did put some of this language into the law. So, it doesn't, like I said, really change the practice, but there are a few terms that need to be updated to comply with the law. They're specifically calling out prone restraint, for example. That's not anything we've ever allowed or trained on other than not to do it in our district in the past. But we do want that in our policy to track with the law. So, if you have any questions, happy to try and answer them or get back to you.
Okay. Any questions? No? All right.
Okay.
I guess that's it.
I'll bring it back for approval then next time.
Next Tuesday?
On the 24th.
Yes, okay, got it.
Thank you.
All right, so our final item is agenda setting. So, if you had, if you could take a look at agenda, you could see what we have coming up. Board members, is there anything that you felt wasn't on the agenda that you shot, you thought would be on it? Or anything we've forgotten? We met recently. Next Tuesday is our quarterly prioritization with Heather, and so she'll be coming. And we'll have a list of items, so it has things like late start and the classroom RFI. Richard, Shelley?
Yeah, I'd like more information on the whole fracking situation.
So, do you want to, should we put that as a, for the quarterly prioritization? Can you hold that until then so I don't have to write it in? Will you remember that for-
I will remember that.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Shelley. I think with the recent report from the county and the issue at Pioneer and all that, I think that's really important.
I just wouldn't characterize that as late start. I'd say it's, you know, appropriate start.
That's a really good point. Also, Shelley, did you want to talk a little bit about timing for discussions around interior cameras? Is there, you had written me an email that you wanted to talk about that. And if we could talk about it now, we could talk about it next Tuesday, whatever you're more comfortable with.
I think I just asked Cindy for the language that she's referring to that allows us to spend CBOB money for those. That's all I really need at this point.
Okay, so you don't, we could stay on the timeline that we have now.
Yeah, I think so. We have that. I will send it in the morning.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, thank you. Any other items? Okay, great, well, with that, we'll be adjourned.